All right. Good morning, everybody. It is nine AM. We'll go ahead and call the mission. The meeting of the Cottington County Board of Commissioners to order. Today is Tuesday, May twenty seven, two thousand and twenty five. Commissioner McElhaney will lead us in the.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder, please silence your cell phones so they don't disrupt the meeting. Call for public comment, maybe submitted in person or via telephone at six oh five eight eight two six two four eight, or the other number is six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven. Any conflict of interest items?
No, no.
No.
None. Looking for action to approve the agenda for May twenty seventh.
So move.
Go move. Second.
Motion by McElhaney, second by Gable. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Number five, action to approve the May twentieth minutes.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by McElhaney. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion is carried. Number six, discussion possible action to allow grassland easements in Cottington County with Chad Carlson of the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. Mr. Carlson, go ahead and step on up here, Mr. Carlson. Just right, right here. You can just come on up to the chair and.
Turn the mic on and.
Have a seat and just push that button right there on the microphone and yeah, that's correct.
Please introduce yourself.
How's this? Perfect, good here? Okay, so my name's Chad Carlson. I work with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. I am officeed out of Sand Lake Refuge, which is about a half an hour northeast of Aberdeen. My primary job duty with the Fish and Wildlife Service is I help landowners and represent the Fish and Wildlife Service with our grassland easement program. Are you guys familiar with our grassland easement program? I don't know if you've heard of it. It's, I'll explain it a little bit, but a grassland easement is simply an agreement between the landowner and the Fish and Wildlife Service to keep grass in the land and not convert the land to crop land. We primarily see our grassland easements in pasture ground because they don't prohibit any kind of normal grazing. There's zero grazing restrictions on a grass easement. So they're, they're very popular with ranchers and in pasture environments and to keep grass out there. Grassland easements have a lot of benefits. They benefit producers who wish to maintain the grass in the landscape. They help preserve the ranch community in South Dakota, and of course, they help support healthy wildlife populations by maintaining habitat within a county and within the state across their landscape, really. Currently, to fund our easement program, our wetland easements and our grassland easements, the vast majority of our funding comes from the Maggotary Bird Conservation Fund, commonly referred to as the duck stamp. In basically, anybody who waterfall hunts in the United States, who's over the age of sixteen, has to purchase a federal duck stamp, a twenty-five dollar stamp. A large percent of those funds go to habitat conservation across the United States. A pretty good percent of those funds are sent to the Dakotas, what we call the Prairie Paddle Region, which is where we live, because this is very important area for waterfall and waterfall nesting. Currently, we use dollars from the Maggotary Bird Conservation Fund to purchase grassland easements throughout South Dakota, throughout North Dakota. Very popular program. We focus on eastern South Dakota because that's the Prairie Paddle Region. That's the area important for waterfall. Landowner interest in our program is very high. We currently have over six hundred landowners in eastern South Dakota alone that are waiting an easement offer. The good and the bad, we have a lot of interest. We have a lot more interest than we have funding than the Maggotary Bird Conservation Fund can support. In two thousand and twenty-five, we may have an opportunity to use another funding source called Land and Water Conservation Fund. You guys, I know we sent an email. I sent an email that explained it. You may already be familiar with LWCF. It's a pretty common funding source. LWCF is revenue generated from offshore oil and gas leases. The goal is promoting land and water recreation opportunities throughout the United States. It's commonly and frequently used by cities, counties, states, and federal agencies. LWCF has been spent, dollars have been spent in every county in the U.S. It's used in cities throughout South Dakota. I know Watertown has used it. I've looked it up. I'm obviously coming from Aberdeen. I'm more familiar with Aberdeen, but they've used it for playgrounds, swimming pools. Throughout the state, it's been used for hockey arenas, boat launches, commonly used. We can also use LWCF for habitat work and for purchasing conservation easements. There's no difference between an easement funded by the Maggotary Bird Conservation Fund or funded by Land and Water Conservation Fund. The new administration at the federal level is requesting before we use Land and Water Conservation Fund to reach out to our local communities and confirm that there's no objection within the local communities prior to using these funds. They're not asking us for a letter of support. They're just seeking a no objection. If you guys are willing, that no objection could come in the form of of a vote, an email, some type of record such as.
And we can just put in our minutes.
You can put it in your minutes, absolutely. And I'm happy and would like to entertain all questions.
Commissioners, any questions?
Yes. So I'm looking at your map here, but obviously you must have some grassland easements already in Cottington County.
Yep. Quite a few. Quite a few. Quite a few. It's popular in Cottington County, too. They've all just been funded by the, not all, but the vast majority have been funded by the Maggotary Bird Conservation Fund.
Is there a map that shows those anywhere on your website or anything?
I can send that. We do have a link, a public layer that shows all of our easements. We have two easements, wetland easements, which are promises never drain, fill, or level wetland basins, and then we have grassland easements. But we do have a map that's available for the public where you can look up easements across the landscape, and I could send that to you or the commission.
Yeah, that'd be good.
So it looks like it's a permanent perpetual easement?
Correct.
Okay.
Just a, Mr. Chair, just a couple of questions for me.
Commissioner Gable?
Yeah, so is there, so the, an applicant would just apply directly to to the federal level. Is there any involvement with state and local in that application process?
There's no, there's no involvement with state or local within the application process. It's, it's all managed at the federal level.
Okay. And then, so, and it's just a one lump sum payment, and then it becomes a perpetual easement?
It, you know, we often explain that unlike CRP, it's not an annual payment. We have the funding to pay it all one time upfront, so it's, it's a lump sum payment.
Okay. And then just a question on, on the procedural stuff. Is there enough, is there enough information in the agenda if we were to take action today, just to put it in the minutes?
Yeah, I believe so. It's possible action scheduled for today, discussion and possible action.
And the one thing I'd like to make sure that I'm explaining well enough is, is we are currently have an active easement program, and throughout eastern South Dakota, we just use that different spot of money, the Maggotary Bird Conservation Fund. So working with landowners almost daily right now, even in Cottington County on our easement program.
Sure, Chair, I got a question. So if there's six hundred and some applicants, what percentage with this new funding do you think you'll be able to fund?
It will not be a large percentage. It's, it's still a, it's, it's a smaller percent, but the one thing this funding does allow us to do too, it allows us to work in areas we're not able to always get to with our Maggotary Bird Conservation Fund. With those dollars, we really have to focus on the areas most important for waterfall because that's funded by duck hunters and waterfall dollars. What this funding does allow is we can work outside of the scope of our waterfall priority maps. So it will let us capture some landowners and producers that have long had interest in our easement program, but we haven't had the, we don't have the science. They don't have the waterfall value of their land to acquire a grass easement funded by the Maggotary Bird Conservation Fund. So it will let us reach landowners that we're not able to reach or have had a harder time reaching with duck stamp dollars. So there's some landowners that have been waiting for fifteen years for an easement and have been very interested in an easement, but their land is in a lower priority for waterfall habitat, so they haven't ranked out high. And we haven't been able to fund it through duck stamp dollars.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Gable?
Yeah, just following up on what, what was just said. So the, so that sounds like the key criterion is, is the priority of the land, even if it doesn't fit in that higher tier with the duck stamp funding, then you guys have a, you, you work out a priority somehow among all the applicants that's based on the importance of that particular piece of land.
That was a question, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. So yes, we work on it. We have a priority area, especially with our Maggotary Bird Fund. It's not a first come, first served. It's based on waterfall pairs and waterfall densities. So often a landowner will be on the list for a number of years if they're a lower priority area for waterfall. And we, we work on the areas highest important for waterfall densities because that's the primary funding and the driver of our funding sources, waterfall and waterfall hunters.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Just a couple comments. Well, we have literature and I didn't view the literature, and I do recognize the fact that they, I know one of the things that a lot of people are threatening, are we going to lose our tax base? But we do not, right?
Correct. It does not affect the tax base. It stays on the tax roll. The landowners maintain all ownership of the land, and it does not affect the tax base. Correct.
Thank you. And another question that I have, but I know that you can't answer it. You can probably be around the bush a little bit on it, but how is the, the easement valued? How do you reach a valuable easement?
Yep. Yep. So we look at each piece of property is uniquely. It's not just a one rate. The heart of our value is really assessments, which comes down to soil types. That's, that's the heart of our value. And then we take some other indicators that determine, help determine a market value out there, and then we take a percent of what we determine could possibly be market value and pay a percent for our grassland easement payment. And those payments do vary. One of the most frequent questions I get, like I said earlier, I cover nearly all of eastern South Dakota, is what's the average easement payment? And it's, it's nearly an impossible question to answer because it varies so drastically. As you guys are aware, land can vary drastically even within a quarter. The west half of the northwest and the east half of the northwest can be assessed at, at much higher or lower different rates. So it, it does vary drastically on the price. But we look at each piece of property uniquely, I guess, too.
Another question that I would have, as far as easements, well, how difficult or is it even possible to get out of the easement? We have a real easement with a DOT right now that's at four, it's probably fifty years almost. And they've said that they're going to release the easement to the landlords, and it just doesn't seem to happen until longer than that. And I, my frustration with easement has not been very, has been bad, I should say. So is it possible to get out of the easement? Let's say the, the property changes hands and the new owner has a completely different idea as far as whether he wants to deal with that particular piece of ground.
Yep.
Can you get out of it?
Our easements with the Fish and Wildlife Service are permanent perpetual easements. So they go on title and they are permanent easements. When it comes to health and safety, I forget about you over there. Sorry, the one. When, if it comes to a health and safety concern, then we have options. If occasionally we've gotten too close to a city, too close to a community, or else a community's expanded a lot further away from what it historically was when they acquired an easement, there is options at that point. So we do have flexibility within our program, but if it's just to get out of it to farm the land, it, it's not a health and safety issue for that purpose. And it's, it is a promise made between the Fish and Wildlife Service and the landowner. And a lot of landowners I work with really value that that is a permanent easement and that they are maintaining grass in the landscape as well. So.
Any more questions? Commissioner McElhaney?
Mr. Chair, so you're asking us today basically like a vote of no obligation against it or whatever. How, have you, has your office been here before? Like how often or how good and how long is it? Is it, you're going to come back next year? Is it three years? Is it ten years?
I will, it's a good question. I will fully admit my presence here today is kind of interesting because I'm basically coming here to ask for no objection on something in a roundabout way we're doing anyways. We're purchasing easements with the Maggotary Bird Conservation Fund. As you guys are sure aware, and I'm sure you are aware, there is a lot going on in federal government right now. Federal government is a dynamic institution to work for right now. So there's a lot of changes that, that we've had to adapt to and new ass. So I, I get it's a little strange to come here and ask for no objection. It, it's something we've been asked to do. When I think about it, we're also coming here and have a chance to talk conservation with the communities we work in and the partners we work in, something we could be better at. So there is value of coming here and talking about the easement program and visiting about what we do. It's, it's under a little different terms. I get that. I, I don't know if, if we'll be back. I, I can't answer those questions because.
Suppose it comes down to who, who's running the administration.
Things are dynamic right now, and, and we're being asked, different asked every day that we've never been asked before. And not, you know, it, neither good nor bad, but things are, things are dynamic and changing right now.
But the landowner actually has the, the final say. I mean, they get, you know.
One hundred percent voluntary easements. Yep. And I, and I will also say it's hard for me to come here because I don't know where to start. It's, it's a big conversation, and sometimes it's like, well, do I start with the ice age? And, and the importance for waterfall value in this area. So it's hard to summarize all this in a short matter, but one hundred percent, it's, it's a voluntary program. It's, a lot of landowners desire this, and the landowners have the final say. And we are being upfront with our landowners too, that this is a land and water conservation funded through that, but it doesn't change anything through the program, but it, it helps them understand why we're able to reach them when we haven't been able to reach them in the past. Because the vast majority of the landowners that we are thinking about for this funding are landowners we were not able to reach with duck stamp dollars. And they're excited about the opportunity to explore an easement.
Well, that being said, Mr. Chair, I'll make it point that we proceed with no objection in the county to the.
Yes, we have a motion by Johnson, second by McElhaney. Any further discussion? Commissioner Gable, do you have anything?
Yeah, I do.
Oh.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
I appreciate you guys' time. I will follow up with that email of our easement layer.
Yeah.
And then just any other questions on the program, I, I would be happy to discuss it anytime, too.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Chad, is your contact information, or can you leave that with our auditor so that, if anybody has any questions, can they give you a call?
Perfect. I'll email you the easement layer and then just follow up with my contact information as well, so.
Item number seven is action to approve plat resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash zero seven, Cordell Brothers addition. Morning, Luke.
Good morning, Commissioners. I will note, just piggyback on what you, this discussion here, too. Usually, because we're talking about properties that are jagging around an area, have been farmed or pastured forever, usually winds up being a plat. They come up before you when they wind up doing it as well. So you do see it most times. We haven't had one in quite a while that has come before you, but this one here, however, is not that. This is a plat of Cordell Brothers addition in the northeast quarter, section seventeen, township one seventeen north, range fifty-two west. If you don't have your section township ranges memorized, this is straight north of Watertown on what you would call Nineteenth Street. If you're in town, if you're not in town, you're going to call it four fifty-sixth Avenue. So it's a half mile north of eighty-one where it heads off to the east at that north exit. They're looking to plat a slightly more than five acre piece of property to retain building rights at the site of a farmstead. The aerial image, it's quite clear. That has been used as a farmstead in the past. It's been lived in, remained lived in. So the planning commission recommended approval at the last meeting.
Motion approved. Motion by Johnson, second by McElhaney. Commissioner Gable?
I was just going to say second, but that's okay. Mr. Chair, does everybody have their microphone on?
No.
Or Johnson? Yes, we'll point him out. Commissioner Johnson made the motion. Second by McElhaney. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. Yep. Thank you, Luke. Anything else for me before I run?
That's it.
All right. Thank you. We've got an hour. All right, I gotta go.
Luke, tell Susie I'll be there. I'm from Nated.
All right, let's go ahead and move on to our monthly reports. We'll get Andrew up here from Emergency Management. Good morning, Andrew.
Good morning, Andrew.
Good morning, Andrew.
Yeah, over the last month, I participated in a tabletop exercise at the airport. Included participants from the police department, fire department, TSA, Prairie Lakes, and of course, the airport personnel. Just kind of talked through the response on a water landing, like what everybody's responsibilities were and what our capabilities were. I prepped the Fourteenth Avenue repeaters for summer, so got the vents open, replaced batteries for EM and Sheriff's Office. Adjusted thermostat, made sure that that was good to go. The outdoor warning sirens, they, they continue to be a little bit of an ongoing challenge. Probably going to have to change gears on how, how that gets approached, and I guess we can probably touch base offline on some of those. Yeah, a few maintenance projects at the search and rescue building. Got a downspout replaced, tightened up a bunch of gutters, and got estimates for a couple of windows that, so a couple of them just showing age, a couple. Another one got a big rock chip, I think from a rock that a lawnmower threw up at it. We hauled a lot of obsolete equipment out to the dump. We still had, you know, the, the old six inch light bars with the little spinning stuff, like just, you know, stashed away in different spots, a bunch of old coats that were all sticky and gross. And yeah, I don't know, just stuff that collects, you know, we, we got some of that cleaned out.
Cleaned house.
Yeah.
You didn't want to have a rummage sale?
Not this time.
Those old light bars could be worth something. Oh.
Maybe so. Sherry and I responded to a, a fire at a local church and got that reported to state. It's one of the reporting requirements that we have. I scheduled a, a meeting with the local fire chiefs. Just going to go over, you know, capabilities, if any of their equipment's changed and so forth. Make sure that everything's working well for them. Make sure that they know of, you know, training opportunities and, and ways to get their, their firefighters trained so they're better able to serve residents. Of course, trying to get the, the grant paperwork, especially those two kind of short suspense grants where we had to adjust fire, getting all that paperwork in order. Other than that, a lot of routine stuff. Sherry and I getting the quarterly report requirements for the L E M P G submitted, monthly Zoom meeting, communication drills. Sherry's been printing credentialing cards fairly frequently, just for us and for neighboring counties as they're requested, and then trying to get the budget in order.
Andrew, you mentioned the outdoor warning sirens. Do we have one that's not working somewhere?
Yeah, there's, there's two that are not working, and yeah, another couple need to get looked at. I mean, they're still functioning correctly, but it's showing battery failure, so.
And where are those two at?
The, the two that I'm most concerned about, one is Grace Lutheran. Well, we call it Grace Lutheran. It's between Grace Lutheran and.
Jenkins Town View.
Thank you. Yes, Jenkins. In the parking lot there. The other one is just north of the County Highway Shop on Fourteenth Avenue.
So people are aware.
Yep.
We're having some issues with those sirens, so. Okay. Thank you.
One quick question. You mentioned the church. Is your office in charge or involved with like the federal agencies that follow up on that fire? Because I know it's, it's a requirement with all church fires that
that I.
ATF or FBI comes and investigates?
You know, I, I guess I should have a more thorough understanding of the process, how it works from start to finish. What I know is that it's a requirement for me to report it onto the state and who the state contacts from there. I, I don't, I couldn't answer that.
I guess I don't know either, which I'm sure when they come to town, they, they contact some agency or.
Probably your fire marshal, right?
I, I think it's through the fire marshal, but I kind of thought your office was involved as well.
Gotcha. I, I mean, I know when I talked to, to Bloom afterwards, he, he mentioned something that like he was getting contacted or some of those agencies were coming to, to look into it a little bit further, but this one seems pretty cut and dry.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew.
Thanks, Andrew. Right. Sheriff, is he here?
Oh, you got a bunch of stuff that you need.
Yeah, I can, I can show his sheet if you want me to, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Hold on a second.
Since he's on the agenda.
Yeah, I don't have his, I just have the, this is when it's on the screen. I can email it later on. I don't, I'm guessing you don't, you don't have hard copies at the moment. But yeah, the one thing that stands out to me is that the, the average daily population is up a little bit in the jail. And then I guess the rest is, you know, the, the, the number of calls, five hundred and forty, that's a little high, a little higher than last month, but, but not out of the norm. So those are the two things that get my attention. So.
Okay, thank you.
So I can email that to her, to the auditor, and she can share it with you, but.
Please, please do for my report.
Yeah, okay. Sure thing.
All right, Andrew, I don't know if you want to come back up for item number nine. That's action to declare inventory surplus to be destroyed for search and rescue. Didn't see that on there. I would have kept you updated.
No worries.
All right, go for it.
Well, we no longer have kennels for, for any canines for our search and rescue team, so we have no further use for any of those. The Bauer compressor, I mean, that thing rattled and made all kinds of noise every time you started it up when I, like from the time I've started here and well before, from my understanding, it now, well, I mean, it ended up like putting a bunch of oil into the lines, and I mean, it, it's toast and there's. there's, this doesn't sound like there's any way to replace it or repair it. So so that's done. And then that's uh that old digital camera. I mean, there's, you know, far better alternatives.
Two two megapixel type of camera.
You know, I I should have looked, but no, it it's obsolete.
Alright, okay. So looking for a motion to declare.
Don't move.
So, so again.
By Schwer, second by Gable. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Discussion possible action to approve the uh memorandum of understanding with the Watertown School District, item number ten. I believe this is for the extension building, correct?
Yep.
Yes, this is. Um about probably a month ago, I was approached by the Watertown PD. Um the Watertown School District was looking for sites for an event of uh emergency event for drop off pickup for students. And they asked if uh um if we could turn around and be able to utilize the extension complex as a drop off from pickup point. And so they drafted up a MOU and so we had to be authorized to sign from the county for use of it.
Motion to approve. I'll second it.
Motion by McElhaney, second by Johnson. Any discussion?
Yes, um Mr. Mr. Chair, um so Steve, is this is this for an exercise that they're planning or this kind of be?
No, this is actually for a possibly event that to utilize this building for a possible emergency event.
Be like a large scale event where you have to tell these people.
Right.
Put put people.
Is this part and is this integrated into the, you know, the all your other emergency management planning, like as an appendix or annex or something to the to that plan?
Yeah, I believe it is. Andrew?
Yeah.
Yeah, it can be added in there with the MOU, so.
Yeah, I would think it'd probably be, it's a kind of a, it makes that, you know, makes sense.
Yep. Okay.
So Steve wants all this is completed, you'll get it back so Troy can sign?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor say aye. We have a motion in a second, right?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you Steve.
Mm-huh.
Alright, item number eleven is action to declare office equipment surplus to be destroyed in the register of deeds office.
Yeah, she has a HP laser jet forty one hundred printer. Um she has the date of two thousand three on it, no longer working, so she needs to replace it. And it was for the vital records.
Vote to approve.
Motion by Johnson, second by Schwer. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Item number twelve, action to authorize the chair to sign a quote for timekeeping hardware and support. Brenda?
Um yeah, Natalie, I don't know if we're ready for this exactly yet. If we have some of our answers, I emailed or mailed one of our fobs in to have that checked. I guess we're kind of checking a few things out, but yes, we have several quotes.
Yeah, I thought they had two of them.
There's two, yeah.
Oh, there's two.
I might not replace them. They might have sent that after I had the, oh no, there are.
This looks the same to me.
There's. No, they are different.
Well, the cost is different.
Yep. Okay, so we um and you can decide if you want to take action on this or if you want to wait, but um in the process of doing our timekeeping system, we need to purchase some physical hard clocks. For the most part, employees are going to use like their computers or whatever to log in web based. Um but there are a few locations that are going to need like a physical clock. So we identified that we need four of them. Um two of them can run off wireless. No, one of them can run off wireless and three of them will be like hardwired. And so that's added the power or ethernet option. They're different because we're trying to determine the first, the one quote has, if you'll see the proximity key fob, sixty of them. And then the other one doesn't have that. So what, we currently have key fobs um for the building or whatever. And so Brenda had, is mailing one in, sent it in to test if it'll work with their software. If it works, then we wouldn't need to purchase that. I mean, we might need to purchase more of our own that we already have to figure if we have enough or not, but we wouldn't need to purchase ones from them. So that's why the quotes are different. So um so one quote would include um the key fobs, one does not. So your max, if you want to approve to cover the higher amount that would possibly include them, or if you want to wait until we have an answer on that, I guess that's up to you.
My recommendation would be that we just wait until we get a number on this and then bring it back.
Yeah, that sounds good. Yep, they hopefully will by next week maybe now.
Right, I did mail that in last week, so we're just.
My my question, if there's it'd really be nice to have one fob, however it works out, so everybody doesn't have two.
Yes, right. That's our hope too.
But if that doesn't correspond with theirs, is there like a plan B that we can?
Then we would order from them the key fobs.
Oh, and then they'll work with our.
And this is just the ones that are going to use like the physical clocks, because again, some people will still be clocking in on their computers or their mobile devices possibly and wouldn't need that.
So Commissioner, I think your question is, is will their key fobs work with our locking system? So they only have the one fob?
No, it's not anything to do with the lock, all to do with with clocking in. So we have to order some hard like um timekeeping clocks, basically for people to clock in and out.
If our fob works with theirs, then they'd be able to have one. Yes.
Cause that one would unlock the doors and lock.
Yeah, that's that's what I was told how it would be.
Yes, but if they test it and it doesn't, then yes.
Long way to get that.
Yes, yeah.
His question, because if the answer is no, is there a fob available as a one fob that would still do both so we don't end up with two fobs?
That's what we're checking on.
That's, I don't think so. I mean, as far as I know, their fob would not be able to handle the security.
No, theirs would not. That.
Steve is shaking his head no.
Yep, no.
Okay, that's, yeah, you're right. I was just interested to see if, you know, people all of a sudden got how many fobs hanging on.
Pretty soon, we're just gonna have a keyring full of fobs. We're not gonna have keys in.
Right.
So it's.
Right. The hope is that our fobs will be universal to also work with their timekeeping clock.
Right.
So that's what we're waiting to find out now. It's been mailed in, just waiting to hear.
Commissioner Gable?
Yeah, just quick question. So how many, so I see sixty fobs on this um uh invoice. Um how how many employees would, so this is just for employees that need to use these physical time clocks, correct?
Correct, because we have, yeah, hundred and twenty or whatever our employee count is. So about half of the people won't need these.
Okay, so so but half will, okay, so.
Yes.
Okay.
The sheriff's department wants all the correctional officers, deputies for sure to have them. So we've counted those highway department, weed, memorial park.
Got it, alright.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there any urgency to this or can we table it till next week?
I think we're okay. It shouldn't take too long. Uh when I talk to Nathan to get, when, once we order them, I think we're we're still okay.
Okay. Are you all good with that?
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thanks, Natalie.
Let's move on to item number thirteen, discussion possible action authorized posting and hiring for highway maintenance tech two position. Natalie, come on up here.
Sorry.
It's alright.
I didn't look ahead far enough on the agenda. Um yeah, so I um am here on behalf of um Randy Superintendent as well. Um we have another retirement that has been announced um the end of June. So we have been filling the positions for the retirements we've had. We've had good luck. We actually have um one that'll be starting in June, but now we have another one coming up. So we'd like to we are, the one that's um retiring is a three, so we are moving somebody that's a two into the three and then refilling the two. So.
Motion to approve.
Motion by McElhaney, second by Gable. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number fourteen is discussion possible action to approve extending the treasures office from eight to four through June. Sure, you probably all got the email on that, referenced that, and we know what that's about as they work through that six oh five system licensing system. They're still having a few issues, but you know, Carolyn or staff are really working diligently to uh to do that. So I'll look for a motion on that to extend the hours.
So moved.
Motion by Gable, second by McElhaney. Any discussion?
There has been some improvements. I've I've been hearing from not only our treasure, but other counties as well. It is starting to get better.
Yeah. It's like anytime you make a big change like that, you're gonna have issues, but we appreciate folks' patience.
Of course, I'll be here too.
Good.
Alright, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, the motion carries. Item number fifteen, action to approve abatements. Number sixteen, claims for payment.
And the total amount of salary claims for the month of May is eight hundred four thousand five sixty four twenty one.
For motion to approve?
Hello.
Motion by Johnson, second by McElhaney. Any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Personnel changes.
We also have a Verizon bill that we need to get taken care of. No, this is still a claim. We had two claims.
Claims, okay.
Separately, I'm sorry. Um salary and now we'll have the Verizon claim and the amount of three thousand seven ninety four seventeen.
So moved. Second it.
Motion by uh McElhaney, second by Gable. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Motion carries.
Budget supplements.
A budget supplements, personnel changes.
We have one of those. And this is for Keith. I I, how do you say, Iations? Uh effective date will be June second twenty twenty five, maintenance tech two in the highway department. He will be starting at step four. Rate of pay is twenty four oh seven, four thousand one eighty eight eighteen a month. He is the new hire.
A move.
Motion by Johnson, second by Schwer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.
No travel requests.
No travel requests. That brings us down to public notice, a possible quorum of commissioners could be attendance at. Are we through all the graduations now?
Think they're all done.
Um let's see. Have anything this week? Anybody have anything?
I do not.
Going once, going twice. Alright. Very good. Uh let's move on. Number twenty one is old business. Anybody have any old business? Twenty two is new business. Think for new business. Number twenty three is public comments. Anybody have any public comments? As a matter of fact, we do. Good morning, Senator. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Glenn Billhauer, good morning.
Morning commissioners. Um my name is Glenn Billhauer. I'm coming to you today as District Five Senator. Uh just a real quick update or uh crash course. District Five is Watertown and the four surrounding townships. A lot of people don't know that. Uh but it just would get that on on the record. Uh just want to bring a couple of things to your attention. I found out in in my years serving in city council is that entities around here do not all work in isolation. You got the city, you got the county, you got the school district, uh you got the states, the state legislative district. Uh they don't work in a vacuum. They they need to work together uh as much as possible. And I guess I want to just make sure that that you're aware that I am here as as a representative, that if if I can do something to to help facilitate that cooperation or collaboration, please don't hesitate to to reach out to me, because I want to do whatever is best for the the district overall, whether it's a county, school, city, whatever. Uh I want to be here as as your representative uh to do what I feel is best. And that's kind of segue into my my second comment that I wanted to make is I don't want to be critical of my fellow legislators out in Pierre, but this last session was very frustrating to me from the standpoint of there were, I could probably rattle off a dozen, fifteen bills uh without too much hesitation. That control was being taken away from the very entities that I just referenced. I was kind of ironic is that the the mood that you're hearing out in Pierre is we want less government oversight, more local control. And the bill and some of the bills that came before us uh did just the opposite. And took, was, were trying to take control away from the local entities. I reached out to a number of you uh throughout some of the the session uh on some of these bills. I will fight for to to maintain that local control. Uh I I think we did a pretty good job of beating back a lot of the bills. Uh not all of them, but I just want to let you be known that I I am here to fight for continued local control and 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 not to take more power away or give more power to uh the state legislature. Because uh it 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 should should not be that way. So I got a feeling this next session, you got the same people that we're going to be working with, we'll probably see a lot of that again. Uh so that's what I want to be known that, hey, don't be afraid to reach out to me. If that's even while we're debating a bill on the senate floor, for example, don't be afraid to reach out to me and shoot me in a, shoot me a text. Uh I I had communication with a lot of different individuals uh throughout the course of session. It works very well. I mean, if we're debating a bill and you want to make a point or I want, or I've got a question to, uh that collaboration goes both ways. But I want to let it be known that, hey, don't be afraid to reach out to me, because I am concerned about trying to take more control away from the local entities that know best what is good for them. Uh so anyway, I appreciate your time this morning, Commissioner. That's all I've got, unless you have any questions for me as long as I'm here.
I do, Senator. Uh are you part of any of the summer study stuff?
Um I I am actually, two different things that I'm involved in. Uh one coming up Friday. It's not a summer study as such. I'm on the appropriations committee and we meet periodically throughout the summer. We've got a meeting Friday in Pierre to kind of review the current uh current budget situation. Uh because that's going to be a dicey topic again come uh next legislative session. And the summer study that I am involved in is the property task, uh property tax review committee. Uh I didn't volunteer for that, but our Senate Majority Leader reached out to me and asked me if I would serve on that. So I might be turning, I'm looking at Commissioner Gable, for example. I might be turning to some of you. Uh we have our first meeting on that. We actually have kind of a primer on that also on Friday, just to kind of lay out our agendas. I think we're meeting four or five different times throughout the course of summer or fall. The first full-fledged meeting is going to be June twenty fifth, so coming up about a month from now. So yes, I am on that committee, whether I want to be or not necessarily. Uh because that was a hot topic. Uh we've heard all sorts of different ideas thrown out there. Uh the one that seems to be, we're, that we're hearing the most about is abolish property taxes completely. Yeah. And that's as far as they go. And as far as, uh what do we do then? So anyway, I am on that summer study. Uh so that should be an interesting uh uh event that coming up.
Good luck.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anything else?
Senator, just real quick uh from from my standpoint here, I just wanted to to thank you very much for your service, not only on the council, but in the senate now. There was a lot of turnover, both on the senate side and the house side this year with a lot of freshman legislators coming in and and I had the chance to to watch a lot of your testimony um as you defended a lot of those those bills and opposed some of them. Uh but you were very engaged and and that's what we're looking for and we appreciate your support.
Well, thank you for the kind words, Commissioner. And uh uh again, don't be afraid to reach out to me. Uh you know, whatever the the occasion may be, because I I want to be here and listen. I I think he had a uh Representative Kent Row from District Four, which is obviously part of Cottonton County as well, I think appeared here a few meetings ago. Uh we worked together very well. You know, I look at uh Senator Steph Sowder uh in District Four. Um Representative Matt Roby here in District Five. We have a very good working relationship amongst ourselves. So uh I look forward doing whatever we can to help out.
Great. And we know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Uh Commissioner Gable, yes.
Yeah, quick question, um Senator. Um thanks for, thanks for coming um and uh spending some time with us. The, just uh on the property tax summer study, is that a legislative summer study or a governor's study?
Oh, that this is the legislative summer study.
Okay.
Uh this isn't the group that the governor put together during session. I I think that committee has pretty well wrapped up its work, and this is a legislative summer study now.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Alright, that brings us to Commissioner comments. Does any commissioners have anything today?
Yeah. We need to talk about our veteran service officer.
Yeah, we'll do that in exec.
Alright.
Okay.
First we are.
So Commissioner comments? Nothing. Right, we do have a need to go into executive session for the purpose of personnel.
Some of.
Motion by Johnson, second.
Second.
By Schwer. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
So no, no action after, I'm guessing?
No action.
Yeah.
Maybe coming in August, we'll have no more executive sessions. All that'll start the next round.
Are we done streaming there, Steve?
You're still, I see you're still on YouTube from what I can see.
I'll keep those off all seven or same direction.
Same direction. Lee, you're gonna stay on?
Yeah, yeah. It's if you just, just the trick is to not turn off the Zoom, but turn off the YouTube stream.
Yeah.
I know Steve.